This meeting will be held in a hybrid fashion with the opportunity for both in-person, excuse me, attendance and remote participation in accordance with Chapter 107, the Acts of 2022, which extended the governor's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, MGLC 30A and 20 until March 30, 2023. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the via the virtual broadcast unless unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. For purposes of in-person attendance, the town of Deerfield will host the meeting in the main meeting room of the Deerfield Municipal Municipal Offices with remote participant participation details noted below. Remote meeting connection below, dial and number, meeting ID and the URL.
I think every time they adapt this, it's longer, isn't it?
Yeah.
This one is quite long. All right. So with a reminder that we want to speak one at a time following our Deerfield Code of Conduct to be respectful, considerate, courteous, concise, non-repetitive, and recognized by the chair. Board members and attendants, I'll look at Zoom first. So first we have Andrea.
Here, present. Andrea leaves some present.
And Mary.
And Mary Cludier, present.
And let's see Kathy Metrowa.
Kathy Metrowa here.
Kathy Sylvester.
Kathy Sylvester here.
Denise Mason.
Denise Mason, present.
And Rachel Blaine is absent and Annalee Wolfco, present. And also would like to introduce this evening Amy Hahn, our new administrative assistant. Amy just has joined us, so she really is just observing tonight. But Amy, if you have any background or anything you'd like to be able to say to us.
Um, I know just, but you know, I've been now, what is it, two weeks now? And everything's going great. Alex has been a great teacher and I'm trying to, you know, jump in in the middle of a lot of things. So, you know, I think attending meetings is helpful to try and find out what's going on.
Great. Well, we're extremely glad to have you. So thank you so much, Amy. Let's see, minutes, we don't have minutes from our July 11th meeting yet. And as some of you may have seen in our last minute email around, Rachel could not come this evening. And so we do need to have someone who can assist with minutes tonight. And then also Rachel had mentioned that September is one of her three months of the year that she's really slammed. So we will be asking for some minutes assistance in September. Rachel has mentioned that she can look, she'd mentioned in the past that she can look at the recordings and work with minutes from there. But is there anyone who might want to be a backup for her?
I'm looking at, and Mary is.
I'll do it for tonight. Absolutely.
Thank you.
No worries.
That's great. Thank you so much. And then we'll maybe figure out what's happening with September.
I think I already volunteered.
Oh, for September?
In a prior meeting.
Excellent. Oh, excellent, Kathy. Okay. It's village, doesn't it? All right. So first on our agenda this evening then is Treehouse. And we do see our Treehouse representatives here. As an introduction, the 3A plans as submitted to the CONSCOM weren't actually part of our Phase 2 that we approved in our previous site plan review. The extension of the walking trail and construction of the new bridge are new. So we have asked Representatives from Treehouse to come this evening and address this with us. We'll be evaluating this new work and then memorializing our discussion as an addendum to our Phase 2 decision conditions, site plan approval, so that it's recognized there. We also will be asking that if there are any future projects that will alter the existing site, if you can come back to us prior to construction at one of our regularly scheduled meetings. I also want to introduce or reintroduce to some people Ken Comia, who is our planner that's working with us from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. I've requested that Ken attend our meeting. Hi, Ken. Nice to see you. See you literally. And be part of our discussions and deliberations. So thank you, Ken. So yes, please, Treehouse, go at it. Thank you.
Well, I'll start. My name is Anthony Wonceski. I work for SVE Associates.
Hi, Anthony. I'm sorry. I need you to spell your last name. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine. It's W O N S E S K I. And I'm a civil engineer with SVE Associates. And Mark Stadnicki is the designer on this Phase 3A project. First of all, I'd like to just apologize if there was some misunderstanding or confusion over this project. And really what it was is we knew we had to go to the Conference Conservation Commission because really falls in their jurisdiction in the resource area of the work that we were doing. It wasn't clear to me that the planning board really had a concern about this because it, and my reading of the code did not trigger or exceed the thresholds for site plan review. So we didn't do it intentionally not to come to the planning board. But when we did receive feedback and I didn't have discussions with, but we offered to come and and just present what we're doing. Essentially, this project or portion of what we call 3A is really a recreational component to Treehouse. If you all recall in site visits that we had out there, Channing LB had constructed some trails which were an exercising trail that the employees could use. And I'm not sure if the town folk actually went on and and used it also. But Treehouse wanted to improve those and they'd been there for quite some time, but also to expand the trails to give it a better experience for the for the customers. I don't know if you know Damian. Damian's quite sports inclined, athletic bicycles and running and all of that. So he wanted to go ahead and do that. So I'll let Mark go ahead and describe what we've what we proposed. And and you're right, there was a component with the bridge. If you all remember the the small wooden bridge, which is very tiny and really old, we we really needed to upgrade that. And in doing that, we had to, we built the building, a bridge that meets the stream crossing guidelines. And that was all approved by the Conservation Commission and the order is recorded. I believe you have a copy of that for your review. Take it away, Mark.
So existing conditions before they started construction of the new path, there was approximately 100 or 1,150 linear feet of trail or walk path on the site. It connected the driveway entrance to the southern building in the connecting hallway. The existing path is approximately six feet wide and it's stone, but portions of it have been overgrown by lack of maintenance. So Treehouse has proposed to reconstruct those paths and expand it further. They proposed to expand it across the stream, have a nice little loop and then loop around the field that they hay or want to continue to have hay and connect the entrance drive to the northern parking area to provide better recreation for the guests on site. The proposed trail is going to be six foot wide like the existing and it's also going to be constructed as out of stone. During Phase 3A also has, as Tony mentioned, the replacement of the pedestrian crossing that's south of the driveway entrance. Existing structure was approximately a foot and a half above grade on both sides and was made out of wood. And we decided to replace that to give safer access across the stream. And in doing so, as Tony said, that we had to upgrade the structure to meet this Massachusetts Stonemont Crossing standards. As we were working within riverfront resource area within disturbed, existing disturbed area, we had to upgrade and
and enhance the riverfront. So there's numbers of plantings that we're going to do to enhance that. You probably wouldn't be involved in this, but when we first went through the first project, DEP took a look at it. Of course, they look at aerial photographs and they had noticed that there were a bunch of trees and they thought that they were cut down. Well, if you all remember, there was a string of willows along the stream there and they had fallen over through storms and got diseased and that's where they were cut down. So we told them we were going to do something like this and at that time we would improve the riverfront. So you'll see a number of different trees and trubs and so forth. And I think one of the other big things that we're doing is if you go back to the original site plan, Mark, that we have, we show that even though the field is is haged currently down on the south end, that when our biologists looked at that, that's wetland area down there, even though and and it's no different to the north where the soccer fields used to be where the kids used to play soccer. That field has now, a portion of that has grown in and is wet and we can't do anything there. So in this area where their hand to take up and, you know, mitigate for us continuing that existing or continuing that trail through, there's a portion that we're going to not allow to be haged any longer and left to grow in place. And also we're going to replicate for that stone trail through this area of the wetland in the middle there. So there probably will be some informational component to this, some signage along there that talks about wetlands and things of that. That's Treehouse will be coordinating with the Conservation Commission on that. So we kept the trails the same size, you know, the extension is still a six foot wide stone dust trail. And and we are enhancing the riverfront as mitigation to working in the riverfront area, even though it's been altered and it's continued, it's a hay field. So and it's worn on the west side of the stream. And that's essentially the the project. That's why, you know, it's mainly just, there's no major grading. We do have a little bit of grading where the bridge, because we want to get the bridge up a little bit to allow for the larger stormwater to get underneath that. But that's the only real grading. It's essentially scooping out the topsoil, getting to subgrade, getting the basin and then having the stone dust put on. So water runs off of it, just as if we're running off of the field. There are no point source discharges with any of this work, which are all triggers for, you know, intensive stormwater type things. So we just, I think they think that this is something that the customers will enjoy. There might be, I mean, who knows, they could have some sort of activities or meets or something I would think there. And that's that's more for them, but but they they try to do recreational components with their properties. They just bought a golf course. Yeah. So I think that's really it.
Well, and then there's the bridge. Anything more about the bridge that you can tell us about the actual construction of the new bridge?
The bridges, or the proposed bridge is going to consist of two concrete abutments and a wooden deck with wooden hill railings. That's going to be six feet wide.
They're really into the wood and the metal, as you see inside the thing. So we don't have the specific details. That's not our our thing. But it is, it is founded on concrete abutments, but and that's outside the area of the bank. This is 20, what is it, 20 feet long or 21?
22, 22.
22 feet. So we pushed it to get it outside. So if you were to look at the tall grass that's there where they mow right up to, those abutments are outside of that. So there is that little bit of grading there just because we want to get it up. So it's a nice smooth transition to be able to walk and and if somebody had a cart, they could be pushed, you know, they could, they can do that. So no real specific, it's supposed to be a wooden timber bridge on on concrete foundations with railings on this.
Yeah.
You mentioned that the walking trail, maybe we can address the walking trail first, is six feet wide. The existing trail is 1,500 feet. The new trail is considerably longer, isn't it?
Yeah, you can, Mark, you can point out.
The new trail is approximately, would add approximately 4,650 linear feet. It would start in the north, yeah, the north corner of the parking lot, travel to the driveway entrance where it would connect to the existing trail. And then there'd be a loop coming off and across the stream to connect the loop. And then there'd be a giant loop around the edge of the existing field connecting the existing trail to the area where they have their water parties right now. And proposed through truck area.
Maybe could you address also, Tony or Mark, the anything in particular with the stream crossing standards report and the stormwater management report that you've submitted? I mean, they seem fairly straightforward.
Yeah, the screen crossing, there are, remind me, Mark, company standards, eight, seven or eight standards that we have to meet.
Correct.
Or of justification why we can't meet them. The biggest one usually that you can't meet is one of economics. But in this case, I believe we met all of them, didn't we?
We did. One standard two, which is that a culvert should be embedded in a minimum of two feet or at least 25% for around culverts is not applicable. But all of the other standards we meet, we increase the openness of the bridge and it's wider than the, it's one and a half times or 1.2 times the bank full width with the opening of the bridge being 20 feet. The stream channel is approximately 14 and a half feet wide. We are, they're not doing construction, they're not really touching the stream bottom. So that's going to be left intact, natural substrate. Standard five is designed with an appropriate bed forms and as the bottom staying natural that standards met. And then standard seven is the bank should be present on each side of the sheet matching the horizontal profile and banks on the, there's no proposed changes to the grading of the thing within them.
I think we might want to have these two reports attached to our notes from today. So what I might ask for with that, I don't know if we have any other questions in relation to this report from planning board members or Ken, just as a small thing on the existing conditions on page two. I think you're in the second paragraph, you're referring to page, to Phase 3A, not 3B here. Yeah.
Yeah, that's the title.
And then, yes, and then potentially too, as you've done on your stormwater management report, if that's something that you could sign also. As you have signed, or is that?
It's signed.
Did they copy the, was not signed?
Did I not send you a signed copy?
Well, I don't know. As I see the stormwater management report, I see your signature here with a stamp.
Yeah. Well, that's probably an attachment.
Oh, yeah, that's.
Oh.
They're attached together.
They're both connected.
Yeah. No connected.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool. All right. Cool. Any other planning board or Ken have questions about the stream crossing standards report?
No, not really. How wide is the stream? I mean, I, it's like 14, 14 and a half feet.
Yeah, the bank's like 14 and a half feet wide.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a really high bank.
Yeah.
You know, if you know the water runs through it, it widens out. It's not special flood hazard zone, but it is the 500 year flood. It's Zone B through there. But so the great thing about this, they have the wherewithal to do it. A lot of times when you get into build things, you're pushing it tight, bringing it right to the to the edge, you know, a lot of times you go culverts because they're, you know, municipalities don't have the money to build a bridge, you know. The thing about this, it's just a pedestrian bridge. It's not a, it's not, we're not having heavy equipment. It's not for cars or anything to run over. So but it's, it'll be built like everything that's built that's really strong. You know, I guess they could bring a mower over it so that they don't have to go up and driveway and bring it around. They could do something like that. But it, it, we designed it so we wouldn't touch any of the resources like bank, land underwater, any of the vegetation there. It has to replace substrate in the stream because those are all important things now with the stream crossing. So this was pushed out very wide. That's why we had to bring some grading in to be able to to make that transition. But it's minimal the amount of grading that.
As I look at the stream crossing standards, as although, you know, they're fairly condensed here, but as I understand them, they really do have to do primarily with the the stream crossing standards and not necessarily sort of the intent of who's going to be using it, how, you know. So I wonder from the standpoint of either going to be bicycles, is what are the safety precautions, the lighting?
None of the trail is lit for evening use. It'll be for, right?
They haven't changed that. Treehouse closes at, oh.
Eight o'clock.
Yeah, eight o'clock and they stop serving like a half an hour before that. So winter time, I'm not sure what they plan on doing. I know Damian said during a site visit that the trail maybe used you around, but he wasn't sure. I don't know if they have like that finalized game plan yet.
Yeah. I mean, if it was lighting, that would trigger something where we, you'd want, you'd probably be interested. It's not at this point. We don't have any provisions for lighting, so it'd be a daytime use during the, during the hours of light during the day.
Okay. Maybe if that could be included in the narrative, I think the narrative will be also probably something that we'll want to attach to.
Okay. We can, we can update that just because that should be true. I mean, if they go to something and they have pedestrian lighting and through there, I think that, you know, any changes now, we've got a good understanding, we'd come back, any site changes or any of the building stuff would trigger automatic site review anyways, that we would come back, even if it's just an informational discussion with the board. So we can edit that to add information that it's for daylight hours.
And then also while you're doing that, I mean, tomato, tomato, minor, major. If you could make note that I think that the new addition to the trail is 4,600 feet because that is a significant increase over the existing trail. So that would be helpful.
Have people actually ridden bikes on the trails before?
Not that I know of.
I mean, is, they're still sort of loose. It's not like it's hard pack.
It'll be hard. It'll be hard packed. They'll, they'll, they'll hard pack it, but it's a stone dust on top. So it, you know, the top little bit will be, will be loose.
Yeah, I don't think I'd be riding my bike on those trails.
No, I don't, I don't think.
Not my road bike.
Yeah, no, I don't. I mean, I think it's for people to walk.
Yeah.
It's walking. I mean, you could, I guess you could jog on it if you wanted to, but.
I don't think it's for bike riding.
No, I don't think so.
And I, I think about that with also just, you know, now close to 6,000 feet of a trail with trash recycling and I don't know, pets are going to be allowed, are they? And.
You can have dogs outside.
Yeah.
Dogs outside.
Oh, Treehouse is very good about having no clientele pick up after the pets and pick up the trash. They're very nature oriented and keeping nature.
They have staff too. They have an abundant amount of staff. I don't know their grounds crew. I don't know how they do that. But my experience, limited experience there, it's, it's been kept in good shape.
Through construction period.
Jen, I think we have a question.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I mean, like the pets outside aren't really the purview, right, Ken? For a site plan review. So just staying on the changes to the the site.
Okay. I was just thinking from a health standpoint.
No, but yeah.
You know, it's like.
Work can do that for the health.
I guess complaint.
Yeah.
And it would be. Other questions? Nope. Yes, Kathy. On the.
I have a question.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
And you may have stated this.
This is Kathy Metrowa.
Kathy Metrowa, sorry. So the bridge itself is six feet wide. How long is it?
The span is 20 feet. But there's a foot overhang on each abutment. So the deck itself is 22 feet long.
Um.
I look forward to walking over the bridge, sipping a beer.
In relation to the stormwater management report, you know, this is back again with sort of subjectivity. Both standard number two and standard number seven talk about standard number two, keeping stormwater runoff de minimis. Does that just mean you hardly see anything? Is there an actual engineering definition for that? Or is there, is it just, there ain't going to be much, sweetheart?
It's less than one CFS is my, if I recall correctly, in the stormwater standards.
And, oh, I see. So that's the definition. Oh, great. Okay.
But if you think about this, so if we take out six feet of hay field and we put in a six foot stone trail, obviously the differences in that when water hits it, there is difference, right? But once it leaves that trail and gets into the grass, I mean, we're not generating more water. It's still hitting and there's no, like I said, we're not collecting it in a storm drain. We're not channelizing it. It's just running through the grass as it always did. So in our opinion, with no point source discharges, anything of that nature, it doesn't rise to the standard of actually looking at stormwater in a very comprehensive review to be able to design certain things because we're not creating treatment problems. We're not any of those, you know, where we have to size pipes or catch basins or any of that. It's like having a walk in your backyard, you know, water's going to hit on it, get in the grass and it's going to dissipate.
Just go through that.
Yeah, it's caught to the level. I mean, there's, I haven't been out, Mark's been out to things. I actually kind of retired. It's flush with the grass. So we didn't create areas, even though you'll see all of our erosion control barriers and everything out there, there's little opportunity for erosion into the thing. That's the biggest concern that we have. It's not the amount of water and how it dissipates because it's going to dissipate over the lawn in the hay field areas like it always has. So hopefully that kind of, that's understandable.
Okay, that makes sense. That's help that.
Yeah.
The pictures is more helpful or as as helpful as the narrative. Number seven, you're saying that the redevelopment will comply with standards to the maximum extent possible. Is there anything?
Well, standard number seven in stormwater standards, it real, it relates to redevelopment of the site. So this is a hay field. It's agricultural. It's a lot of things. So when you're, it really goes to, I guess, to more of a commercial or a development where say you take an old mill and you turn it into apartments or something like that and you're reworking the parking lot and that, they don't hold you to the highest standards as if you were cutting trees down and starting something from scratch over natural.
Yes, right.
So, so there are some, there are some, I mean, you can't cart launch to whatever you want. So, so there are some, there are some, I mean, you can't carte blanche do whatever you want. There are standards you still have to meet, but because you're tied to an existing rehab of some other facility, you have to meet um only to those as, as best you can. Because there might be constraints on an existing site that you can't get to the level of standard as if you were starting from new or from raw land. So that's the best way that I can describe that.
This obviously.
Yeah, this is, yes. Really, the storm drain with this doesn't do anything. The screen crossing and putting in a pedestrian bridge, that meets their standards, but also meets the DEP's requirements um for openness ratio and leaving the banks and substrate alone or recreating that if we had to get into it, but we're not. That's the most important thing from a stormwater standpoint for this project.
I see, okay. Bob, do you have any other questions or comments?
Uh was that, I don't have any questions or comments, no. No, I mean, the bridge, um I've been receiving all the concrete reports, what structurally sound, not worried about that. Really no comments.
Yes, I, it certainly seems that the um removing that foot to foot and a half step from the whole bridge, which was kind of bringing it to the skin with, right?
Yeah.
Good thing.
Save for definitely.
Right.
Well, yeah, I mean, when Channing B was there, people weren't drinking, when Channing B was there, people weren't drinking beer. So if someone's wife, it's nice not to be tripping onto the bridge, so a nice smooth transition.
Well, I think the best thing is when you get heavy rains down there, that bridge is not gonna stay there anyways. They probably picked it up, moved it back and, you know. Um that they're looking for something much more permanent and, and stable, so. I, I think this fits the bill and it also is a huge improvement over that little pedestrian bridge.
Ken, did you have any other thoughts?
No, I think um as the applicant has um, you know, described the project and I think to the chair's point with regards to just um ensuring that any amendments to um the initial site plan approval, um you know, just come before the board, even if it is informational. But I think it, I think that the project itself is compliant with, with the needs and, and based on the site plan.
Perhaps we would state that in our motion and also ask for the attachments of the narrative and the stream crossing and the stormwater management standards reports that you pulled together, so I appreciate that. Um any other comments or questions from the planning board? Appreciate that you came to see.
Well, thank you. It's, it's, it's wonderful working with the board. You guys are great.
So.
My bad on not coming, so.
Well.
Mark, Mark won't make that mistake. Thank you.
No, 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 but I, we still need to vote. I mean, you wanna be here for the vote, right? Although if we can have a motion, I think the, I believe the, the motion would be to um. Well, let's see, help me with this. Add as an addendum to the uh approval of our Phase Two site plan review that we have examined the Phase Three A as presented to the Conservation Commission and to the Planning Board and find that it is in accordance with our prior approval.
Is it actually an addendum to Stage Two?
Right.
It's really Stage Three A.
Well, but we don't.
I, i- is it, or is it, is it an amendment? This is An- this is Andrea talking. Is it an amendment to the site plan review of, of Phase Two?
Our understanding from some legal counsel is that we could either have this as sort of an attachment to Phase Two or, you know, try to go through the whole kit and caboodle of the site plan review for Phase Three A.
We're doing it as an extension?
Decide to do that.
To Phase Two?
Extension, is that appropriate?
Because we're, we're, we're not changing its origin, we're, it's, we're adding, so it's, I, I.
Extension sounds.
Um, yeah, yeah, this is Andrea.
Yes.
When working on the um fees and schedules that um we'll be talking about in a, in a minute, Planning Board fees and regulations, the word amendment was encouraged by Casey. When we, um when plans get changed, they are amended. And we want to probably keep that language um the same. So I would encourage us to refer to this as an amended plan.
Uh, uh, can I just?
Kathy Wetroba.
Kathy Wetroba. I think that I'm, I'm happy to use whatever language anybody feels is most appropriate. But we're not changing Phase Two.
Exactly.
It's an extension of Phase Two to add these motions of Phase Three A.
What?
In my opinion, maybe I'm misunderstanding.
What I'm also recalling as you speak, Kathy, is that um the other thing we could, that was suggested we could do is memorialize these in our minutes and then attach the minutes to our previous Phase Two. So I don't have to call it anything.
Okay.
Yes, let's do that because it's not an amendment.
Okay, so we then would be approving a motion to approve the um.
These three A? The, the minutes of this current meeting to reflect our decision for Phase Three of the trail, Three A of the trail construction and bridge work at Treehouse.
Right. Good, including that future projects that would alter the existing site be brought back to the planning board.
That's your motion?
And then also that we have, that we have the attachments as discussed.
Yes, and we have the attachments as discussed.
Say that.
Well, thank goodness.
I think it was moved by.
Denise.
Denise and seconded by Kathy Sylvester. Uh is there any further?
No, we can work out the language, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so Andrea?
Andrea Liebson, uh yes.
And Mary?
Emery Hootier, yes.
Denise?
Denise Mason, yes.
Kathy Sylvester.
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Kathy Wetroba, yes.
Annalee Wolfco, yes. So now you can leave.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And if Treehouse was open, you could go have a beer, but it's closed tonight, sorry, tell me.
Right.
Well, there are other statements. Put a name like oneseski, you know?
All right, and so Andrea, you were just mentioning fees and um take it away.
Uh good night. Now I gotta go, so.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Bob, very much for coming. Appreciate it.
On July eighteenth, the planning board met to update its handbooks. And we discovered at that time, there was another planning board fee, which had not been included in the document um that was sent to you all. Looks like this, right? And so we need to add one more fee, and that is the stormwater permit fee. And so it will fall, it will fall into three point three F stormwater permit. It currently, that dollar amount is one hundred dollars. Uh and I need to speak a little more closely to Jen to determine if that amount of money seems appropriate for the work that's involved by administration. So the dollar amount isn't set at this point. And uh that's the only addition that I believe um will come under the planning board fees and regulations. If anyone has any others that.
Could be our discussion tonight. Casey suggested one fifty uh since often stormwater is combined with site plan review and therefore it wouldn't be up to the two hundred or two fifty that most of our other permits are. But Jen, your thoughts on this?
Um I agree in um with Casey with it being at one fifty because if we're charging quite a bit of money with something that's con- you know, that's concurrent with another application, it becomes, you know, quite expensive for the applicant. And I think that with a combined application, it, it, we're, we're already doing some of the work. And increasing it slightly by fifty dollars, I think is reasonable.
Okay, if, if everyone on the planning board is amenable to that, I will um add this extra fee into the document and send it along to everyone.
I have a question, Annalee, because I thought on September twelfth that we were going to have a public hearing. We don't have a meeting before then. So tonight, if we vote on this and you send it, I mean, even though you don't need to send it to us for approval, we can approve that tonight so we can have that public hearing on the twelfth. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay, so we should, yeah, we should do that so that we can have that. Definitely, okay.
So I don't, I don't think we need to have a vote in particular if we all seem to be in agreement with the one fifty and that the stormwater regulations as um we reviewed last week with other adjacent fees is still acceptable. And we'd like to go forward with our public hearing on, uh at our September meeting.
Yeah, correct.
And Amy who is here will be posting the public hearing two weeks in advance and all that good stuff. Thank you, Amy. Right, anything else with the fees, Andrea?
Not that I'm aware. Did anyone find anything else? Um we, we did a big aha at that July eighteenth meeting, but that was, I think, the only one. Did I miss anything else? That's good. Okay, so Jen, do we need to, do we need to vote or are we?
No, we're good because then we'll have the public hearing and then that will um approve everything as one.
Okay.
And then Andrea will be going off free of COVID to Treehouse for some beer. Thank you. Or Berkshire or one of our other fine breweries. Um alrighty, so let's see, next on our agenda. We have um periodically been knocking away at various tasks that we wanted to do, one of them being fees, thank you Andrea. One of them being accessory apartments that Kathy's going to be speaking to in a minute. Um uh we did fortunately receive our um small but very much appreciated appropriation at town meeting. And um so we are splitting our part-time planning assistance between Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, Ken, and Franklin Regional Council of Governments for COG with Peggy Sloan and her staff. Um as we talked, I think at the previous meeting with Ken, that Ken will primarily be addressed uh assisting us with um bylaws um as they come forward and also the app and um not bylaws, I'm sorry, with applications. I just gave you a new, a whole new responsibility there, Ken. All of our application, with applications as they come forward, working with Jen and with Bob and um our town staff, um and also helping to update some of those actual applications and then helping us with writing decisions and writing conditions. And so we sat with Ken on that, but um as we all recall, we did have a number of priorities that we then discussed with Peggy in general, and what she actually says is a good three to four year plan. But um other than having her available to us for um periodic assistance or bylaws that other entities might be bringing forward to us, we can give her some, you know, some priorities and a, a way to get started. So I did send out to everyone um the uh, the sort of the consolidated list as, as we have it right now. Certainly right now, she is, she is assisting some with um our accessory apartment bylaws and um loo- looking at our floodplain bylaws, but otherwise, um yeah, there were a question of basically updating some of our uh, our plans, our master plan from two thousand, our housing production plan from twenty fourteen. And that certainly ties into our need for increased affordable housing as we saw from the Department of Community Housing and Development. Um looking at um our town bylaws, updating them for inconsistencies, redundancies, unintended consequences. That could be a larger project or a smaller project. I'm not quite sure how that would be, so Jen might be able to address that. Um looking at strategizing how we might have an approach to quote upzone our town center. Um mixed-use development, smart growth, terms that maybe I don't even know that I'm saying, just like some of that CSI, one inch CS, whatever, um with the, with the zoning. Um looking at updating our roles and responsibilities in our planning board and, and actually overall our planning board rules and regulations, and that's sort of a big cipher. Um we do have a draft of our roles and responsibilities, and I'm not sure that, certainly we don't have in our, I mean, to some degree, I don't believe we have. If there are other rules or regulations, um they're not maybe highlighted in a way that I could understand. Um and then also looking, strategizing how we could increase our housing inventory. Those were things that we had talked with Peggy about. And so, planning board, what do you think? Kathy Sylvester.
Um I, you know, looking at all of that and working on this ADU bylaw, just came to my attention that, you know, having someone look over the bylaws that we have and make sure we don't have this, you know, conflicting bylaws.
Sure.
And discrepancy, it seems to be paramount because when you're writing a new bylaws or trying to do with ADUs, it gets kind of dicey and when you have things that are, you know, if you cross-reference them, there's conflicts, so. It would be nice to have her look at that, but I know that's a big ass.
Yeah, well, Jen, maybe if you could talk about that some too, because it seems like I have seen or heard maybe two different ends of that. One being um Peggy did mention if she really was going to be looking comprehensively at our bylaws, that that would be potentially a Delta grant of, you know, fifty, sixty grand and, whoa. And I don't really know what, I mean, and it seems like then all of that is something that then would go to town meeting and go through all the boards and whatnot. Is there, is there another way to sort of begin that project or is that what you were thinking of when you proposed this?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I mean, it really, it should be a comprehensive look and be it costs a lot of money to do because you really need, uh, you know, I would think a, a team or at least somebody to be focused and to really go through the bylaw with a fine-tooth comb and really look at, I mean, even, I mean, you, even today, I was talking to Amy because of the emails that you were sending about the way that our online um E-code is set up and we're working with E-code to fix some of the things and, and combine. So even our online um bylaw isn't very intuitive and comprehensive. And so we're working with E-code to fix that, but I mean, that's on a different level, but really going through each one of our bylaws and making sure that there isn't any inconsistencies. I mean, we found things, Bob found things in our bylaw that are just even, not even relevant anymore. And changing the language and making sure, I mean, Ken could see that, I'm sure, by glancing a little bit at our bylaw. So um I really think of a grant that can be a comprehensive look uh to help us pay for those changes is what we should be looking at and not sort of piecemealing it. Um that's where I think we run into more problems. Uh what do you think, Ken?
Um I mean, I think what ends up happening oftentimes, and especially if you have the momentum to pass the accessory dwelling unit bylaw is work, use that momentum. The, the cleanup can happen after. Um and that's always my approach, especially if, if there is that discussion and it's very strong in town. Um I think with. I think with regards to, and I'm doing this process with the town of Pelham at the moment, looking at their zoning bylaw through, as you mentioned, Annalee, it's a DLTA grant, I'm assuming that Franklin Furcog also does something similar with their member communities. But typically it's to, you know, go with a fine-tooth comb through the zoning bylaw and identify conflicts and identify words that, you know, may be troublesome. Or, and then also working with the planning board to see if anything had happened during the past couple of years since they passed these bylaws with regards to any confusion of administering them, that's the important thing, you want to ensure that. And, and to be, and to be truthful, they, their bylaw is actually written quite well, considering the volunteer nature. Like Jen said, they also have e-code and there's a lot of mismatch between what the record of the planning board is and what e-code has, and so just taking a quick
I don't think we all know what e-code is.
Thank you.
So, do, e-code is our electronic, the state approves our bylaws and it goes through e-code and they approve our bylaws and they put it electronically online. Can you say it better than I can?
Yeah, I think typically, and what ends up happening with a lot of smaller towns that don't have e-code is you have a PDF, right, that you amend over time, that you just add those items. As Jen said, e-code is the, like, formalizing, if for lack of a better word, of all of both the general bylaw and the town zoning bylaw. So typically, it may lead to new formatting, new numbering. And I don't know where the town is with regards to that, but it's, as you can see on the website, on, on, you know, when you look at, try to look for Deerfields zoning bylaw, it's a page that shows, says zoning bylaws, it has all of your previous amendments over time. And then it has a zoning PDF, which I don't know, you know, what is that reflective of? Is that the most up-to-date PDF based on the zoning bylaws amendments that you've just passed in the past couple of years? Or is it like based on, you know, another year? So I think it, you know, it's always, I think it's good to go to e-code, but there is this weird, you know, timing issue, especially if, you know, the town clerk's involved and has working with all of the previous town meetings and all of the records of bylaw amendments, both town and zoning. So, yeah, I, I think that you're on the right track by identifying that you need a comprehensive zoning bylaw review. I think that every community, especially looking at the list of amendments that you've passed over time, it probably is worthwhile to, to ensure that, you know, citations are correct as well as maybe because of the way your numbering scheme was prior, that you kind of shoehorned an amendment based on the existing numbers. This way you'll be able to identify that you may want to change your home numbering system and, you know, apply what you already have passed and just put them logically and then create a system for future amendments, so that it's a lot easier to follow. So it, it's kind of like, you know, something to reassess, ensure that, you know, your code is compliant with 40A, some of the changes, some of the language, identify things that maybe the planning board may want to look at over time. In Pelham, we were looking at one of the things that came up, and it, it also involves somewhat of a community process too. So, you know, they don't have, their, their master plan is from years ago, but they're also identifying bylaws in time and real time that they want to pass. So this is an opportunity for them to also, you know, use my efforts to help them write a common driveway bylaw, which is one of their requests, or addressing cannabis, which is something that they're also trying to do. So it's things like that, but, you know, obviously you work with, you know, I think as, as Annalee had mentioned with talking to Peggy, that's something that typically could be funded through a DLTA grant, you also have other types of grants that you can, but it is a larger effort and it probably costs a lot more, it's more time-intensive.
Oh, it's almost as if there's a good news, bad news with that, the, the good news is that maybe only just to the extent of writing the grant, it would eat into our planning allocation, but the bad news, put it that way, is that it would be a significant project that let's, you know, might be
I have a number of questions. So the first thing is, would, is, would the Furcog be able to write that grant? Okay, that's a just quick question.
They've, then, they can. But I don't know if they would charge us to write, to write it.
Well, it depends, I mean, I know when we did the shared streets and spaces grant, the Furcog wrote it, but then there was another, of course, I can't remember the name. There's another organization that was through a foundation, actually paid for them, paid Furcog to write that grant. So that's a possibility that I think that's a question for Furcog. The second thing is with e-code, does that mean that all of our zoning bylaws are there on e-code and, okay, so would, and are they all up to date? Or would, would the Furcog have to look at the e-code and then look at PDFs to see if there is a direct correlation between the two?
So it was very interesting, because I just got the login to e-code so that I could see all of the back ones, just recently, I just was like, we were trying to find a bylaw and first particular year, and I'm like, if, if we don't have it in paper form, where does it exist, you know? And so I just sent an email and they gave me a login and I found all of our back bylaws, which is great, because now somebody knows where they exist. Also, there is a part of the e-code that says new bylaws that haven't been put into what you look at. So up in the upper, when, when any average, any person in the community goes to bylaw and looks at our bylaw, up in the upper left-hand box, it says new bylaw. So those are all the ones that we sent, we went to town meeting, we were, they were approved by the AG's office, they were sent to e-code and e-code uploads it to this site. And that's where you can locate anything that was approved at town meeting, and it's by article. So doesn't say what it is in the article, but you have to open it and see what it was. If it, if it's something that's pending for the AG's office to approve, we had a bunch of mistakes that happened. I know Amy sent me an email and I haven't been able to check it from what you said, Annalee, that there was a discrepancy in dates of approval time, so I need to look into that. And that would be a question for the AG's office and for the clerk's office to ask e-code why that, I have to look and see, I haven't, I didn't, yeah, my zillion emails from being on vacation, so I haven't gotten there yet, but that's where they all live and they get updated. And what Ken was saying is about the PDF, see, the other thing is, is that if we had it in a Word document, we would be able to, like in Air Mars, we made a new by, bylaw, every time anything was updated, they made a paper copy or a Word document that we could print out, that updated it every single time. And it wasn't like you had these new bylaws that are sort of out in somewhere else land. So that's what Casey was talking with Carlene, our interim town clerk, about updating and paying the money for e-code to do that. Seeing how we could get a Word document, because converting the PDF is, would be a disaster.
Okay, this is helpful for this piece of our potential priorities, I don't know if you had a particular, an additional question with this, Kathy?
I had a quick question, this is Kathy, so is there a templated process for updating these bylaws? So for example, I mean, so for example, you're looking at key specific things, four key specific things. Is it relevant, is it too vague, is it too restrictive, is it inconsistent? Like, is there a process that's streamlined, that has a templated element to it, so we're not wasting time and wasting money, like we have some scaffolding and some structure to the process?
I mean, it really depends on somebody going through it, I mean, you don't, it, because of the way a bylaw is actually developed over time and voted on different years and, and it's, it's piecemealed together, so if somebody didn't check that properly or match words correctly, or I mean, it's like, you know, when you write a will, if you use the words and/or, and it's all on interpretation of, at least with the zoning bylaw of the building commissioner, how he interprets that. So if it's not clear, and it, it's difficult, and to your question, no, there isn't a template, and because it's based on our, our town's bylaw and how it was sort of put together over time. And what Ken was saying before, I have seen a few towns' bylaws and I find the numbering is so important in being able to follow and find information. And I find it a little bit challenging for Deerfields to honestly, to, to actually, yeah. And, and so to really look at the numbering and to see how we could change that and make it easier for people to navigate through it and, and, you know, table of contents and appendix and index, like all of those things, I think are really important to look at.
Okay, so I think they have a good understanding of how comprehensive that could be, what's another area that?
Can I ask a question first, before we move away from e-code? Are we, do we pay for e-code? We do, so if we are not using it properly or extensively.
We are, we're using it, it's just a matter of people knowing how to use it. And, and also it's, it's the incorporation of it, and I'm not sure, I don't know, I have not used e-code like, like, I've not, I didn't use e-code before.
So this is new, this is a new it's not new.
Not new to Deerfield, but Carlene seems to have a good grasp on e-code, the interim clerk, and so I know this past week she's been talking to Casey, so I'm not a hundred percent sure what they're planning on doing, but it's gonna be quite expensive to to get the Word document.
And, and who's, I'm sorry, I'm just confused about, so who pays for this? This is not a planning board specific expense, this, a town, why? Because the select board would use it, the planning board would use it, the administrative offices would use it, yeah?
Probably the general funders, I don't know, I don't know where, I'd have to get that answer for you, honestly, but.
And so part of it is, you know, to get our money's worth, we should use it most effectively, yes? So maybe it makes a lot of sense to make this a high priority, if we, anyway, that's, that, that is what I was thinking.
Well, but it has been being used, like, we send our, see, the last couple of years have had really a lot of bylaw changes that Deerfield hasn't seen in a, in quite a while. So that could be the reason why they're all like living, I don't know, and then Barbara left, so why they're all living and still in the new but, you know, new bylaw changes and not been incorporated. So I'm not sure where that process is and how it gets absorbed, and maybe Ken knows, because he's dealt with
Certainly sounds as if there needs to be some work, or some, as you said, research done on the staff level to find out exactly what's involved with this. How about the pieces with, we've talked a lot about our master plan that's 22 years old and is a, should be a template for us going forward and for many boards going forward and is also a sizable undertaking that hopefully would involve a lot of residents as well as people on boards and committees. Also our housing production plan, which still is a pretty good plan, but it's just, nothing has happened to it, anybody have any thoughts about those?
We have to choose one.
Oh, yeah, right.
And, you know, I, I think the next thing, you know, just getting back to the zoning bylaws, I mean, if we can find out, first of all, what, what were you saying, a DLT grant? I don't know what the grant was. Okay, would that cover this and who needs to write it? How much is it, if it doesn't cover it, you know, do they have any other ideas where the funding can come from? And then just hire them to do it.
So that would mainly be talking with Peggy about what are the specifics of getting a DLT grant? And what would it cover, right?
That would be great.
Okay, so then are there other in relation to this list, other things that people would see as priorities?
Well, if, you know, if, if the Furcog can write that, if they can do that, we can get funding for that, you know, we sort of, you know, we obviously have to have a back and forth with them, but at the same time, we could be working on the different parts of the master plan, so we can look at that, there are five different parts to the master plan. Not all of them need, you know, crazy updating, but we can really look at the ones that are most important and start working on them. And I know the economic development part is very important, and I think the select board has mentioned that, I think that is. I think that sort of goes hand in hand with what we're trying to do with connecting community initiatives, so we could take a look at, you know, the five different parts of the master plan and start on that. And I know, as, as you said, Annalee, when they did it before, it was a huge community involvement, there are a lot of people on different committees, so I think we could start working on that.
Well, as we talk about, we can start working on that. There's a question of who the we is, I mean, you know, your CCI chair, we've got, you know.
Well, I, I, you know, I think that first of all, we is the planning board, because I think it was the planning board's responsibility for the master plan, I think we should take a look at, at least not, not read the entire thing, because I think we have one copy, right? Is it that many pages?
Oh, it's, no, we've got it, it's, it's, it's
We need a copy, right?
Yeah, electronic is really difficult for me to look through a zillion different pages, but do you know how many pages it is?
Oh, it's, you know, it's
Yeah.
Too interesting.
Okay, so maybe, okay, then each of us, we have to decide each person or persons, maybe we can have two people look at each section, okay? And then decide, then come back together and decide, hey, and then we can prioritize which section we should start on first. And then we get committee members, we get other committee members to join in with that and just do it one piece at a time.
I think probably one piece at a time is the only way we're gonna how about the question of looking at our whole housing situation? And strategizing, in fact, ways to increase our housing inventory. We do have a housing production plan, that would probably be one of the first places we would start by looking. I mean, again, the question is, how could we engage Furcog to assist us with this? You know, to be with, with all of these things, how can we get Furcog to help us, not just that we have more tasks to share amongst ourselves? Denise, you look
I'm looking at all of these and I, I know, you know, you, she said it's going to take a couple of years and my concern is that there are so many things on this list that we're going to dilute, you know, we're gonna have so many things that we're doing that none of them are gonna
Maybe I, maybe I introduced this incorrectly, I'm thinking from a priority standpoint, so what's the one thing? What's, maybe what's one thing that we might ask Peggy to assist us with, to begin with?
Zoning. That would be my vote.
For the housing production plan? Don't you talk about zoning?
Yeah, what do you mean? For, for the, if you're looking at the second bullet, draft zoning bylaw changes, that's when something comes forward, that's a urgent request that, you know, in the past we've had Chris help us or you know, if a planner who could help write a new zoning bylaw for, like Kathy and I were talking today about needing to look again potentially at our short-term rental bylaws. So we would have Furcog, we would engage them to look at our current bylaw, make some suggestions, bring it back to us, and then we would take it to town meeting. So that's, that's sort of a that sort of will happen. Depending on if we have anything in particular that we can have as a burning issue to ask about. Depending on if we have anything in particular that we can have as a burning issue to ask about. You know, and and for example, I mean, that would tie into the fourth bullet down of looking at this question of what can we do to sort of revitalize our town center as we're looking at the town campus? We certainly have some concerns about the concrete and the lack of trees and the, you know, whatnot in the town center. Is there a way that we can actually incorporate some mixed-use development with some housing in there? And, um, you know, is that something that that Peggy could assist us with? First of all, educating us with what are some possibilities that we could look at? I mean, I have a feeling that that might mean then proposing a lot of bylaws changes in a number of ways.
So if I understand you rights Kathy Slofester, you're asking just to get a priority list and start.
Well, or even just a, you know, a number, I mean, it could be that it it might not be that we're giving, as of tonight, that we're giving Kathy a marching order that this is what we're gonna ask you to do first. You know, it could be that we'll ask her about how might she approach, um, looking at our bylaws? And then how might she approach helping us with our master plan or with upzoning town center? Or, um, you know, what would be the ways that they could help us with that? And then we bring that back. I mean, it's not that we have to.
I I guess I look at the reviewing the the bylaws and the master plan is like putting the foundation for everything else that's on this list. Yes. So I feel like that's a prior, those two are the priorities to me. And then we can build from there once we have the foundation that everything else depends on.
Yeah, we agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Well, there we go. Okay, so I will talk with Peggy about how, in fact, either she or through some grand assistance, and oh, by the way, how do we get that grand assistance? Could help us with reviewing our bylaws and with, um, starting to update our master plan. When we talk about reviewing the bylaws, I mean, we've got a number of bylaws that we are required responsible for. There's chapter one seventy-nine, which is all of our zoning bylaws. There's also the stormwater management. There's, um, subdivision bylaws. I think right now we're primarily talking about one seventy-nine. Is that correct? Yeah, the zoning bylaws. We got started with that.
Right, and we have to just make sure that the general bylaw also has, because we have the general bylaw and within that, then you have the one seventy-nine. So making sure that they're.
So you want it to be general bylaws also.
What do you think, Ken? I'm not a planner. I'm just saying that there's, you know, we don't want it to conflict.
Well, I I think what what you're alluding to is basically that what Jen is alluding to is within the contents of E code, there's a specific enumeration. And ensuring that whatever that enumeration looks like, that the planning board zoning bylaw also uses that enumeration. Obviously, they're gonna be different headings. It's gonna be, look a little different. But it's knowing that chapter one seventy-nine is the planning board's zoning bylaw. You're gonna have one seventy-nine dash one. That's your introduction. That's your purpose, right? One seventy-nine point two, that's the definitions, let's say, depending on, depending on how, um, you you have your bylaw. But it's it's ensuring that the enumeration follows what E code looks like. Um, because currently, it's listed as four-digit numbers, right? Fifty-four hundred for the site plan review section. So maybe presumably that would be one seventy-nine dash thirteen, let's say. Um, depending on, you know, that enumeration, once there's, there, there's just gonna have to be a lot of coordination, I think, to ensure that whatever your final zoning bylaw looks like and whatever process that you go through, that, um, it, you know, is coordinated with the the town's effort to update.
Okay, so that would just be a question to have Peggy opine on also. Jen?
And I have a question for you. If you know of a town's bylaw that you really like and the formatting of it, that just really flows and is easy, that we could use as an example to look at just so people can understand the differences between, you know, Deerfields and, I mean, anybody can stop. And I have Amherst bylaw on my desk that's old now, very, very old. But you can sort of see the way, I mean, I was just used to using it, but if there was some other bylaw that you know of, that would be.
Talking about general bylaw or zoning bylaw?
Well, zoning bylaw, if that's what the board would be interested in.
Um, I I would, I mean, I, when I do my reviews, I obviously play within the context of what they're currently using. So for instance, yeah, so tell them has, is, is has E code, they know their chapter one twenty-five. So all of the amendments that I'm trying to suggest they do is like one twenty-five dash one is, you know, your purpose. And then you have up to ten, but within one, two, three, four, five, there's like one point one or one point one A or whatever.
You write, you get spaces for adding, right?
And exactly, so you have, uh, yeah, you have a predictable numbering scheme when it comes time to amend.
Okay, so I'll ask, uh, how the conversation with Peggy kind of in two places. One is, how might they be able to assist us with starting to update our master plan? Section by section, most likely. And secondly, how might they be able to assist us with um, writing, obtaining grant assistance, grant support to, um, review certainly our chapter one seventy-nine bylaws and potentially the general town bylaws also for inconsistencies and whatnot. Is that what we're talking about now?
Yeah. I agree. I agree too.
Okay, no, then it is an ongoing conversation. As as, I just had my house painted, you know, it it's harder to prep than it is to actually do the work.
True.
So I think we're doing the prep right now. That's okay. That's all right. All right. Thank you all very much. Um, accessory apartments update, Kathy?
Um, so we haven't made a lot of changes or progress. I I had a meeting, Rachel and I, with Peggy Sloan um, from FERCog as she's now got some time to give the planning board. So we wanted to get her input and she read through our draft. Um, and I'm going to now meet with Chris to make some more changes and so forth after getting her input. There's a couple of questions that I wanted to bring to the board to get your opinion on. I hope I can explain this because I'm diving into the middle of something that's probably, it's foremost in my mind and probably not yours. So, um, if you remember, well, if you go to the current bylaw, there is, um, definition of what the size can be, okay? Currently, it just says, uh, the maximum gross floor area of the accessory apartment shall not exceed thirty percent of the gross floor area of the dwelling or twelve hundred square feet maximum, whichever is lesser size. In no event, however, will the apartment be required to be smaller than eight hundred square feet. That's what is in our current law. So there's a lot of batting around about, you know, is it, should it be half the size? But no more than nine hundred square feet. Some people felt that was a little too small, wanted to go to twelve hundred square feet. And so there's all this discussion. So what I have found out is it'd be wise for us to know the temperature in the town for passing this bylaw at all. Because if we want to pass by simple majority, the language has to be very specific. Um, and that language, according to, uh, Peggy, you found this information, some zoning ordinances and bylaws from the state. Let's say we want to allow someone up to twelve hundred square feet, we would have to get two-thirds majority at town meeting. If we wanted to get just a simple majority, it would have to read the statutory definition limits the size of the unit to no larger in-floor area than half the floor area of the principal dwelling or nine hundred square feet, whichever is smaller. So you could have a fifteen, fourteen hundred square foot house, could not build anything larger than seven hundred square feet. And if we went with that language. And that's limiting.
Yeah.
So, um, if we want to be more expansive, we have to be ready to uh, or be prepared to pray for two-thirds.
Work for, work for.
If we really feel it's gonna be a razor-thin margin and we want this to pass, we should go with this more restrictive language. So I just wanted to get some feedback from what people.
Kathy? Did you?
Oh, no, we were just.
Well, I I've
Denise?
I have some questions. Okay, so first of all, it's, okay, first thing we've talked about before is that to do an accessory apartment, to add on, first of all, you have to have, if if you're on septic, you have, it it's gonna be very difficult.
But we're not talking about septic sewer right now.
Well, I know, but that has a big, that has a big bearing on this bylaw. Because to do that, it would be so restrictive. I mean, it would be really difficult for a lot of people to do. So I guess what I'm saying is that I think a lot of this would happen within town with the sewer because it would be more affordable, okay?
Sure.
So if you look at that, then secondly, um, oh, gosh, I sort of lost the second part. Size, I mean, seven hundred square feet is really small. So I mean, I would, I would opt for, I'd say nine hundred. At least eight hundred.
Well, let's just say, if we're gonna go for the two-thirds majority, then we can go with any way we want. I mean, the the feeling of the subcommittee, um, some members were fine with nine hundred and some said, you know, I really think we should say the max, that it should be no larger than twelve hundred square feet. In other words, you could have a three thousand square foot house. Your ADU cannot be more than twelve hundred square feet. That seems reasonable, um, in comparison to the size of the main house. So there was, you know, there's, there was debate. And I would say, since Rachel's not here, I'll tell you what she said. And she said, I'm more of an incrementalist and I would stick with the language of, um, half the square footage of the primary residence or nine hundred square feet, whichever. But in no case, I think what she would, what we also said, no case would be required to be less than nine.
But we're not sure if, according to Peggy, that that would be acceptable. That would not work, right? That would not work.
I mean, we could say that. We could say, you know.
We still would need two-thirds.
It would be half the square footage of your house or nine hundred square feet. In no case would we require it to be less than nine. Or we could say half the square footage of your house or twelve hundred square feet maximum. You know, something like that.
So can I just add a little something where? So the statutory definition is by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, housing and economic development. So this is the statutory definition of the state, in the state, it's not of, yeah, I'm sorry. But that that's why if we want it to pass, we have to follow that. So we do have to follow that because it's beyond, it's beyond us.
If we want to pass with simple majority.
Yes, and it's also beyond local limits. It's a, it's a larger um, body that's governing what can be presented and how that's voted on.
So we can present others, but we just have to get the two-thirds.
Yeah, sure.
I had another question, and I don't recall, is, does there have to be a certain firewall in between? So if it's, if it's part of the house?
I don't know, probably building code.
Okay, so that's, yeah, that's where the.
And it can be detached also. Detached is also okay with this.
It is part of building code for having separation.
Yeah.
There's also requirements, let's say, if you have a garage and you want an apartment above a garage, so. But that's all building code. Um, something I didn't, um, I didn't know if your group had, because I haven't been at your meetings, um, if they've addressed is if in our, um, zoning bylaw, if it states, you know, how big of a lot you have. And then if you add another dwelling unit to the lot, that, you know, that's something that would need to adjust. If you were having larger units versus smaller units, you need so much square footage of your lot. And I just don't know if if that's been looked at.
About setbacks or are you talking about?
Not setbacks.
Percentage of the lot that can be built on.
Correct.
Is that what that is?
Yeah, that that too, but there's.
Yeah, I don't know that.
So the only thing that I think we've mentioned is that we still have to comply with setbacks. And, um, that there can only be one accessory apartment per lot. But if it fills up the whole lot within the setbacks.
Well, there's a percentage that you can, that you.
We're complying with the rest of the.
Right.
Building codes.
Building codes, right.
Still have to, you know.
You're right. Right.
Right. So I mean, if you're having a fifteen hundred square foot accessory apartment because you have a three, you know, three thousand square foot house and that it, you know, that you have enough land and setbacks, so it doesn't look like you're crowding in. You know, it all depends on the area. And if you're part of septic, it just, that seems large to me in, um, all of.
That's a good point. I mean, pretty sure we can, we can check, but I think right now there is some clause in there somewhere that says that we have to comply with the rest of the dimensional requirements.
Yeah, yeah. But is there a point where it's finite?
Kathy, yeah, Kathy.
I mean, is there a point where it's finite, right? So people could have various size houses, which might indicate half that size for an accessory dwelling. But is there a point where it's finite? It cannot be more than.
Yes, yeah. That, yeah, so that's why, that's why we talked.
Like that becomes our point. We we can write whatever we want, you know, and that it was either nine hundred or twelve hundred. Well, it's battered around, nothing larger.
But that finite piece is not part of the state statute.
Right.
So if we wanted to do a maximum size, then we would be at the two-thirds majority.
Gotcha.
Passing.
And.
Andrea, yes?
Um, I'm, Peggy, I assume knows what's going on in other nearby towns. Have certain things passed more readily than others and, um, are the towns more like Deerfield? I I'm just trying to figure out, instead of it completely inventing, you know, reinventing the wheel, I has, has a town gotten it right and it's working?
Okay.
Well, I believe they're almost all nine hundred maximum or nine hundred square feet. I don't remember how that's mentioned. Kathy's checking that now. And, um, in these other towns, there have been one or two or three units a year.
Yeah, yeah, and nine hundred is the state average. I would, you know, the most common number.
So something else is that you could also have different types of of, um, dwelling units. So you could have one that goes from, you don't have to have just this and nothing. You can have, you can have a supplemental, you know, a, um, dwelling unit that's attached, that's small, that only, uh, needs building commissioner. If it's larger than it needs, that's separated, then it needs a special permit. And I mean, there can be different categories.
Yeah, we do have that. I mean.
Right.
Basically, if it takes up more than than the footprint of the existing home, it's gonna need a special permit, the way it's written in the draft.
If it's bigger than the footprint?
Yes, or if it's detached either. Whereas if you say, um.
Wouldn't that be a two-family then, or?
Not, depends on how you build it. So, you know, it has to have the look of a one-family home. You could have an entrance on the side or in the back. It it has to be in keeping with the appearance of a one-family, which is what makes it different than a two-family. So you can enlarge your home, you know, by making, putting on an ADU that's attached. It's gonna be a bigger footprint. It's gonna need a special permit. Or you could have an ADU that's detached, same thing. It's gonna need a special permit. Or you could re-outfit your house the way it is by making, I have a split level. I could make the downstairs into a separate, independent unit, and that would not need a special permit. That's by right. That's by right.
One of the things that Kathy and I have discussed, which. Is larger than the scope of the conversation right now, but when we're thinking of. Do we feel like we want to go with this fifty percent, you know, simple majority versus the two thirds is.
Question here.
Yeah. Right, is also to. Sort of how controversial might the other sections of the bylaw be? So as Denise was talking about septic versus sewer, we're saying septic, there's still a little question about that, that septic would need to have. Authorization.
Has seaport health approval.
Board of health approval.
Versus special permit, and I'm still trying to clarify that, because I don't think it needs a special permit unless it needs the other. Conditions requiring a special permit, such as a detached building, which would need by itself a special permit regardless of where you built it. Just to, one of the things that the state is pushing towns to do is to allow a lot more of this by right, actually. So. That's the trend. I mean, they want to increase housing.
Right.
Denise?
Does it make sense to do it, you know, to do just the, the first one? What is it? The by, not the by right, but the nine hundred square feet? Pass that, see how that goes, and then we can always amend it, you know, maybe a couple of years from then, when people sort of get used to the idea. Does that make sense?
So that would be a half of the square footage of existing residents or nine hundred square feet, whichever is smaller. That's what it would be.
So that would mean that with a fifteen hundred square foot.
House would be pretty small.
You could only have a seven hundred maximum ADU. Because it's written, yeah, that it can be fifty percent of your primary dwelling or nine hundred, whichever is smaller. So you'd have to have at least an eighteen hundred square foot house for it to be.
Yeah.
Right.
And when you're taking that square footage, you're not including a garage, you're not including a basement, you're only include, okay.
Living area. So you could build an ADU with a garage and, and, you know. An attic, that's not going to be included. It's living space.
Well, okay, so, so that may be a question, maybe the building inspector has an answer to this. I mean, because I guess realistically, I think most of this would probably happen within South Deerfield. Okay, that's on, that's on sewer.
Yeah.
And so what are the smallest homes here? I don't know, I have no idea with the square footage. I mean, are they, are a lot of them fifteen hundred square feet? Or the, or most of them a little larger than that? So what do you mean?
Mine's twelve hundred.
Yours is twelve hundred? The whole is twelve hundred square feet?
That's what they said. It seems like it's bigger than that.
Yes, they're not going to take.
Excuse me, you think yours is twelve hundred?
Yeah, I think the houses on my street are relatively around that. And that's not including my basement. I have a pretty large basement.
Wow.
So, I mean, you'd be surprised, really, when you start looking at square footage and how much space there is and then.
That's how you use the space too.
Yeah, I mean, another thing that might be helpful, if we went for the two thirds majority, we might want to keep the, the maximum. At nine hundred. Sort of in middle ground. I mean, we're still going for the two thirds majority, but we're not going for the twelve hundred, which might be scary.
Yes. That could be in some sections of South Deerfield, another house.
House, yeah, it could be quite big, yeah.
What we're really looking at is accessory, like, and add on, yeah, for, you know, a variety of.
Interesting idea to bring back to the group.
Yeah, so I don't know if we're going to have another subcommittee group or not, but I'm gonna, you know, it's really discussion between us tonight. And then have Chris write it. So it's, you guys have the last word, you know?
Well, I mean, I did see that the. Special Town Meeting is, has been set for October twenty fourth, seven P M. Everybody put that down in their calendars. So. Recognizing that we would need to have public hearing, I can't remember, we have one public hearing or two when we're doing a bylaws. Proposal, just one, just one, okay. So it would mean that we would need to have our public, well, we could have extra planning board meetings. We could have the.
Have it. You want, you want to have this ready for special town meeting and not just wait for annual town meeting?
Well, that's what we're debating about. That's what we're debating. If we wanted to try to have it for the special town meeting, we'd have to probably have an additional.
Yeah, I'd also talk to Casey about.
Excuse me, Jen?
Speak with Casey about what else is on that special.
Well, she said that we could put.
Oh.
Packers in, so.
You know, another question, because, you know, I already know from past meetings that there will be pushback from certain individuals, okay, we all know that. So, so I guess the question is, what kind of information can we get out to the public about this prior to the meeting? That would be helpful to help educate people to help push that through. That's what I would be more inclined to hold off until spring instead of trying to rush it to, and then have a failed attempt and have people, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Mary?
That would be mine.
I want to second what Denise says, because on social media, we are often perceived to be pushing things through on special town meetings. When we're just trying to get business done. So I think that if we waited, that, you know, optics problem wouldn't be there.
Well, if we could have, have some informational material that could be distributed would be very helpful. And if we had some of that informational material, we could distribute that at the special town meeting. We could have, we could talk to the reporter, Chris Larrabee, who's been doing a terrific job, talk to the reporter, have him come to one of the meetings. And he can put a good piece in the paper and a lot of people here read the reporter. So, you know, that's, that's what I would.
I think also this is a, this is to some degree.
Kathy, yes.
I'm sorry, Kathy. I think this is also to some degree like a pocketbook issue, right? A financial issue for many people. That they want to not only develop more housing in the town, but they want to stay in their own home, they want to cut the costs of that, they want to, you know, separate living space. And it may actually be something on, at the annual town meeting that will bring more people out to vote. It'll be, bring more people to the meeting. I mean, I don't think they're heavily attended. And so we're passing some big ticket items with very few people and we need to get as many people, you know, to these meetings to vote as possible.
Um, yes, Jen?
Have you, um, has the committee thought of maybe sending out a questionnaire to the community about what their, you know, wants? Just.
No.
You know, we got, I mean, we got quite a bit of.
Have not thought about that.
That's a great idea.
Just because then it's, we're being more like we're asking people for input and then.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I mean, we did have the subcommittee that at least included members of Finance Committee Zoning Board.
Oh, I think that that's wonderful. I'm just sort of seeing.
No, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
I mean, I could be doing this project for the next three years, is my worry. You know, and you know, you've already added like, you know, just that information and just like, ah.
But it's, you'll always get the people that say, I didn't know, even though we've talked about this at every meeting and, you know, it's. Just putting it out on Facebook, putting it out on our website, having the flyers, I mean, you know, from CCI and. You know, senior housing and all, all of it, that it's. Just getting it out there as much as possible, so we have people on board to, to know what's being talked about, even though we've talked about it.
I mean, one of the worries I have about sending out an informational questionnaire is that no one's going to answer it, just like with the senior housing.
Well, then we can't say we didn't try.
I know, but how many times have I gotten text messages about that senior housing thing, which I sent in a long time ago, because, you know, they're not getting.
But. Kathy, I was going to suggest, you know, if we had a five question questionnaire, hang out at the dump, what do you think about these five things? Answer them for, you know, we just walk with people as they dump their trash. We could get some, we could get some data gathered.
Are we allowed to do that these days?
As, as we look at this, at the components of the. Of the bylaw, we, it, it might be hard figuring out the five top points, but yeah.
The other thing about the October special meeting is I'm going to be gone most of October, so I will be just coming back. And so I won't be able to do anything about this right before the meeting.
Well, okay.
Yes, Denise, sorry.
No, that's okay. You know, I think with anything, it's, it's never just one thing that you do, it's multiple things that you do. So I, I still think it would be a really good idea to come up, you don't have to come up with, you know, confusing if it's this, it's this, you know, just come up with the idea that. We're working on accessory dwelling. The reason why is because you may have an in-law, you may have an in-law, you may have, you know, who knows? You may want to rent it out to a UMass grad student, you may want to have some extra income, whatever the things, whatever people may want to do. Put that on a piece of paper so we can send it out to whoever does show up for the special town meeting. We can put that on Facebook, you can put that wherever. And by that time, you just keep doing it, keep repeating it, you know, have it at the dump. And by the time our regular town meeting comes, somebody's got to know what's going on.
So we would do it without a mailing, which is going to cost money.
The mailing.
That costs too much money, I would think.
No, not, not a mailing in person.
But at the special town meeting at the dump and.
Yeah, I mean, multiple, multiple places. And put it on Facebook, put it on Deerfield now, as even Mary says, you know, there are the naysayers on Deerfield now, but there's also some really good information on there too.
But this is, I mean, something else that, that I've permitted in the past was somebody who wanted to stay on their property. And so their caregiver actually lived in the primary dwelling and the person that was elderly built a single family. That was on the property and the caregiver could then, you know, so it was like they were living in the accessory, this, this person that permitted, you know. And it was, it just, it's, it's thinking sort of outside the box for people. I had never heard that. I'm like, oh, so you're not going to live in your main house? You're going to build another building and smaller and you're going to move in there and you're, you know, but it makes so much sense. Like you feel like you're on your same property, you're not going into assisted living, but you have, you, you have a rental property with somebody that is caring for you as well. And I thought that that was pretty, it was a neat way to.
Yeah.
Look at it.
I have one more thing, though, I should probably show you. One more question about this, not spend too much time here, but. This is a little complicated and, but. We spent a lot of time talking about. The primary residence or the ADU, which doesn't matter who, that the owner, in whichever piece of the property they live in. That they need, it needs to be owner occupied except for bona fide absences. Then we got into discussing what does that mean? And then it got into, well, how long is that? And then it was, well, six months, okay, six months, like, can they take two months here and there? Then it was six months per calendar year, so you could actually be gone a year. And then it was, well, what about the person with a single family home? They don't have any limits on how long they can rent their house for, right? They don't, you can rent your house for five years. So.
And who would, who would be, this is Andrea.
Just a moment, please, Andrea.
So what the subcommittee threw out there was try to be fair to everyone. So you have an ADU and you had it built for whatever reason, doesn't matter, you sold the place, somebody else bought it, you know, they. Lived there for ten years and they rent out the ADU and then they want to go to that, like the couple that came to us that went to Alaska. They want to leave half of it empty so they can come and go. They might not come for a year, but they want to come and go. Well, as long as we, if we change that language, instead of saying, you know, has to be owner occupied except for bona fide absences. Take that out and just say only one unit can be rented. Then you kind of get out of the whole mess, right?
Yes.
And so that's the suggestion. So I just want to bring that to get your opinion. So that person could leave. I mean, they could leave half their house empty if they want to. I don't think anybody wants to do that for too long, but.
Andrea, you had a question and then Denise?
Who would regulate that, the coming and the going?
I mean, as any of this. As any of this, none of it is going to be policed, it's going to be by complaint. It doesn't matter how you write it. No one's going to regulate it or police it. It's going to be by complaint driven only, regardless of how we write that.
I think the, excuse me, Kathy, I think the probability, though, if somebody has an accessory dwelling unit. And one person has to be living there. They're not going to let loose their house on people that are going to damage it. I mean, there, there will be owner responsibility, I think, for that space.
The owner still is responsible for the place.
And I, and I, so I think taking out the language is a great idea. I don't, I think the probability of it being problematic is less likely. Because the owner of the property is not going to have somebody in there that's responsible unless they're, you know, Airbnb-ing it and people are in and out, in and out, in and out. I don't, I don't think that's the case. So I think the probability was, it would be less. Problematic to a neighborhood than more so.
So it's not going to become a two family, in other words, because you can't rent both units.
Right.
And we also have some language that, you know, you can't do short term rentals in these.
Right.
Right. Denise?
No, that's fine. I mean, I was with Andrew about the enforcement, which I think is ridiculous and it's never going to happen. But, you know, I agree. I think, you know, just renting one of the units sounds good to me.
Okay.
I think that sounds reasonable.
And Mary, you have a question?
Yeah, Mary, you had a question?
Yeah, I just want to be aware of like not making a backdoor sort of bylaw, like if we want to make a bylaw about like, you know. Two family unit rentals where one of them's empty, then we should do that. And if we want to make an accessory unit one, we should do that. And I, I want to avoid accidentally creating bylaws because they're loopholes. So I want to just, you know, make, be, pause here and think carefully about that.
Can you?
Say, well, you don't have to live there and it's by complaint only, well. I, I don't know. It seems like some people could get away with it and so, I don't know. I, I think we might want to think carefully about what we're creating.
But isn't that also, as Kathy was saying, what we could do with our own individual houses now?
Okay.
My house. I mean, that's the question is.
Either way you write this, somebody could take advantage and, and break the bylaw and who would know unless it was complaint driven?
Well, I just want to make sure that if we're making a, a bylaw that says that you can have two rental units and you don't have to live there, that that's what it says. And it's not an accessory dwelling unit that turned into, well, technically we can do this because it says that. So that's, that's my concern. Or make a bylaw that makes it legal. Like I, I don't have a personal stake in it, I just want to use accurate language.
I'm not, I'm still not sure I get it. So by default, we don't create something else. So, because it's only a one unit can be rented is what it says. So you're just, are you saying that you can foresee maybe someone would rent both anyway and then?
Right, and I think that if, I mean, do, is, is it legal to do that? Is there a way for people to own a property and have two rental units in it? And rent both of them out in a residential neighborhood right now?
No.
Well, then that would be something that somebody might be tempted to do if they needed to pay their bills. So all I'm saying is like, if we're going to make an accessory dwelling bylaw. That sort of has this, unless anybody complains about it loophole, then maybe we should also, maybe not within this, but think about making a bylaw so that that's legal. If that's. If that's what we foresee happening, you know what I mean? I just want to make a path for people to do what they want to do with their property in a legal way. That isn't a loophole of some other bylaw. Does that make any sense?
Yeah. I, 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 I'm sorry, I really can't follow this. For some reason, I'm, it's not getting into my head. And so there's two families, they're different than ADUs in, in a few different ways. In bylaw, in the bylaws.
So we're talking about a single family home with an ADU. We're not talking about a two family home.
Right.
So that language needs to be clear. I think it's that piece right there. So what we're discussing is a single family home with an ADU, attached or not attached, right?
Right.
Or not attached. And so that language is clear. It's not a two family, single family with an ADU. And the ADU. Its size requirement. And the ability. Are we removing the language of has to be owner occupied all the time? I mean, this is where we're getting monkey, you know what I mean?
Right. Right, I think we're, we're um instead of saying how long the owner can be gone.
Right.
We're simply saying you must account for one part of it, one, one or the other.
You can only rent one part.
You can only rent one, one of the dwellings, the other part, the other dwelling is yours, now, I don't think anybody's going to.
I think as long as we say you can only rent one of the two, the primary residence or the ADU, you cannot rent them both at, at the same time. And I think there maybe should be some onus of property management on the owner of the. Right, like.
Well, but then do we?
You don't have fireworks and having a party and having six dogs and.
Do we have that for any single family home that someone rents? We don't, right?
Yeah.
So I, I don't want to start making.
Yeah.
We probably, I mean, this is indicative, first of all, that this ain't going to happen for October twenty fourth. That's for sure. And it's ten of nine and we have a.
We could discuss this next meeting.
That's right, well, I think also too, um.
Yeah.
Chris Curtis has been working on this since last year. He had some additional monies that were not spent from the last contract period that were brought forward to this fiscal year. Four hundred and fifty dollars.
Four ninety five.
Four ninety five, is it?
Yes.
Okay, but, but the contract expired last June thirtieth, so um we are looking to renew his contract to continue work on this bylaw to the um limit, at least at this point of four hundred and ninety five. And if we need more, then we would have to come back to the planning board for um a new contract and a new. Is that, so Kathy, you want to make a motion?
About the contract? Yeah, I make a motion that we extend Chris Curtis' contract for the purpose of finishing our ADU bylaws, not to exceed the cost of four hundred and ninety five dollars.
Nice.
I second that.
That was Denise, uh, so Kathy Wetraba.
Kathy Wetraba, yes.
Kathy Sylvester.
Absolutely.
I need help.
Yeah, Denise.
Denise Mason, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Liebson, yes.
And Mary.
And Mary Cludier, yes.
And Annalee Wolfco, yes, so thank you.
To be continued, um, and we do have one note under, um, other business not recently anticipated, Denise?
Yes, um let's see, okay, we have um just going back to Snowberry Court, which will eventually in town, which everyone's aware of, which will eventually be turned over to the HOA and um what we want to, I think we will be hiring, the town will be hiring a peer review to peer review the engineer who happened to be Tony tonight. Okay, and so, and the reason why we're doing that is to provide more inform, you know, just to put the homey, homeowners at ease and um, you know, to address their concerns, okay? So we want to do that, um, we've, and, you know, just talking to Casey, in the meantime, since Snowberry started, we've had four different building inspectors. It's been very confusing, we've got a whole new planning board, the only person who was still in the planning board is Rachel, which is not here tonight. And we also. And three town administrators sort of interim, so I mean, it's been a very confusing time. So we felt that this is what we should be doing and I talked to Casey, I think she talked to the um, to the engineer and it would be approximately five hours to review, two hours for meeting, a hundred dollars, so it would be approximately seven to nine hundred dollars to do this. That's the planning board would pay for, and I did check with Barbara, thank you, Annalee, and in our account, we've got twelve thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars, so I think that we can do that, I think we should do that and hopefully we will move things through, make everyone happy and put it to bed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Want to make a motion?
So I would make a motion to pay for the engineer for the peer review for Snowberry Court to the approximate, I don't know the exact approximate, seven to nine hundred dollars.
I second that.
Kathy Wetraba.
Kathy Wetraba.
Discussion?
Discussion, yes, Andrea.
Um, I'm wondering why the planning board is paying for it and not the company that built Snowberry.
That is, that is a very long answer, Andrea, um, that is because the prior planning board did not make a request to do that and put in a bond and at this time it would stir the pot and not be good.
Thank you for that answer.
Yes.
A short answer to a long answer, um, and as a reminder for during the discussion, um, since I'm in a butter, two in a butter, I will abstain.
Yeah.
Can we say, um, just, I think you did say it, but just to reiterate, because Casey was saying seven hundred to a thousand dollars, just to, or asked, you know, at least have that buffer.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so. And I, and I said approximately too.
Yes, yes, you did.
All right, um, then we'll call a question, Kathy Wetraba?
Kathy Wetraba, yes.
Kathy Sylvester.
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Denise Mason, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Liebson, yes.
And, and Mary?
And Mary Cludier, yes.
Who seconded it? I'm sorry. Denise made the motion.
I seconded Kathy Wetraba.
Thank you.
And Mary was, yes, and I abstain, so it passes. Public comments, um, are there any?
No.
Still hanging around, it doesn't appear to. Reports, committees, seminars, discussions?
I can do a very quick report on C C I connecting community initiative, we're, well, we have a meeting Wednesday night, so who's ever on the committee, I hope you'd be there. We've been, we've been working on, we've been talking to various legislators, we've talked with Jim McGovern a number of times, we've done a presentation, he's, you know, the last time we talked to him, he said, you know, a lot of people ask for money but they don't have a plan, he said, you guys have a plan and he'd like to continue meeting with us and we are talking, you know, we asked him hopefully put in, I guess, next time, a three million dollar bond, I don't know whether, you know, or earmark, I'm not sure exactly what it was. But um, so we, we have been very busy working on that and working with the town on, uh, you know, figuring out the, the various buildings and what we're doing, so, you know, we'll keep you posted, if anyone has any more specific questions, you can just ask me or join the meeting, join the C C I meeting, it's open to everybody. But there is definitely a lot of, a lot, a lot of movement in town, which is really good, of course, we need a lot of money, so we're working on that.
Other committees? Andrea?
Open space and recreation, any meets tomorrow, four thirty.
Good, keep plugging away at that condensed report. I'll mention too that, um, I've been, I've had a number of conversations with Pete Law, the chair of the Conservation Commission, and actually, we had a conference call with Peggy Sloan, asking how might the planning board and the Conservation Commission work a little bit more closely together? And her main suggestion was that, in fact, we keep talking to each other and then also pull into that loop, um, the Z V A and that members of the various committees should attend other meetings or listen to the reports as, as the meeting zooms as, um, YouTube or whatever it is, um, as possible, so thank you for those of you who are, um, I'll let you know when some of these other meetings are going on and if you can.
Can I just, can I just add to that, just briefly? That's, that's part of the reason for connecting community initiative, and I ask people every single time, because there are representatives who represent every single board and committee in town. And so I say, please go back, I don't care whether you're committee chair or just a member, please go back and tell people what, what's going on, what's transpired in the meeting or invite them to the meeting, they can always look online. So that's also a means of educating people so that you don't have to attend every single meeting, which is really difficult. I mean, oftentimes I see Annalee on the meeting or I'm in the select board meeting, but not everyone is able to do that. So, you know, have conversations and communicate with people and that's really important to try and be as transparent as possible.
Thank you. Our mail, Amber Gardens, and I'm really appreciating having these monthly written updates, they're just exactly what they need to be, they're concise and they're small and basically every source has finished their due diligence of the property and still waiting for a conservation, or a conservation the cannabis control commission to review the application, um, I think there was an article in the recorder a couple of weeks ago talking about how the cannabis control commission has just a huge backlog and I, you know, or they're not, what the causes of that is, I'm not sure, but but approvals of these marijuana establishments are just so slow everywhere. Shelburne Falls had a Z V A public hearing, a special permit to construct a warehouse and storage facility, and then also Greenbo- Greenfield had a special permit that was granted for construction of a nine hundred square foot detached accessory apartment with the condition that new lighting be shielded and downcast. So, good, there we go. Okay, our next meeting is September twelfth. And if there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Kathy Sylvester, and it looks like Kathy Wetraba was just in there.
I'm sorry, I second that motion.
All right, any discussion, all right.
Hi, yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Denise?
Yes. Yes, yes.
Annalee, yes, all right, thank you all very much and see you September twelfth, see you in September.